Commissioner Walls, over to you to start when ready.
Great, thank you, Brandon. Good evening, everyone. It is Wednesday, December the 10th, 2025. I now call this regularly scheduled virtual meeting of the Aurora Planning and Zoning District, Planning and Zoning Commission to order. I'll now call the role of commissioners. Commissioner Jecik.
Present.
Commissioner Bush.
Present.
Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Banka.
Present.
Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
And Commissioner Walls is also present.
I'm also present.
Sorry, Commissioner, I called your name, Commissioner Geiser, sorry, I apologize.
Present.
The Pledge of Allegiance will not be said tonight as this meeting is virtual. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from November the 25th, 2025. Did you all receive a draft of the minutes, had an opportunity to read them? Are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the Chair moves to approve the minutes as presented without objection. Is there a second?
I saw a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 25th as presented without objection. Is there any discussion on the motion? Without discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the minutes from the 25th will be approved. Tonight, we've got one item of general business, item 8A. The Chair moves to approve the agenda as presented without objection. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Banka. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented without objection. Is there any discussion on the motion? Without discussion, is there any objection? Without objection, the agenda will be approved. I'll now read a summary of our policies and procedures for this evening's meeting. Please make sure your home or computer microphone is on mute unless you're speaking. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is a quasi-judicial hearing. There's no swearing in of those who will give testimony, but it is presumed that all parties are telling the truth. When addressing the Commission as an applicant or their representative, please state your first and last name, as well as the organization that you're representing. And you may additionally state if you are an Aurora resident. If you're addressing the Commission as a member of the general public for public testimony, please state your first and last name, and if you are an Aurora resident. For each agenda item, there will be an initial presentation by city staff. Afterward, commissioners may ask questions of staff. Discussion of agenda items by commissioners will be conducted only following a motion and a second. Following the staff presentation, the applicant or their representative may choose to make a presentation or answer questions. The applicant will have 10 minutes for their presentation. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. Members of the public that have signed up to speak will each have three minutes to speak on the agenda item during this public comment period. It is asked that only new information be presented. The same argument should not be repeated. Commissioners may ask questions of the public following their comments. After public comments, the applicant will have five minutes to address any public comments. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant. The Chair will ensure all commissioners have no further questions of the applicant or staff. The Chair will then call for the question. After a motion has been made and seconded, the commissioners will then discuss the case amongst themselves. After the discussion, the Chair will call the question. Commissioners are finders of fact and will vote based on their evaluation of the evidence presented as compared to Code Section 146. All rulings by the Planning and Zoning Commission are normally final. Exceptions are zoning map amendments, zoning code amendments, and comprehensive plan amendments that need City Council approval. Decisions by the Commission can be appealed to City Council by presenting a written appeal to the city manager within 10 calendar days of the public hearing. City Council also has the discretion to call up any case whether an appeal has been made or not. Notices for this virtual meeting were published, posted to the city website, and the development projects were posted with signs on the properties. Notices were also mailed to adjacent landowners per city requirements. Without consent, we will move on to our first agenda item, which is 8A, the Aurora Places Comp Plan Amendment. Throughout the city, our case manager this evening is Daniel Krisonowski, the applicant, City of Aurora, Daniel the Forge yours. Noting for the minutes, we are now joined by Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Riley, you can hear and your microphone is working?
Yes.
Great. We've established a full quorum this evening. Go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you. This item is an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan to amend our planning and annexation boundary. This is not something that comes before the Commissioner or Council very often, so I'll provide a little refresher on what this is and how we use it before handing off the presentation to representatives from Aurora Water to talk about the why this, why now portion of the presentation. The planning annexation boundary, or the boundary, is a planning tool that the city uses to guide our very long-range growth and development. Cities in Colorado are required to look beyond their existing boundaries to areas that may be considered for annexation in the future and do planning for these areas to understand how they can be served. This boundary is that area that we do some of these land use planning, infrastructure planning, public facilities planning to ensure that if these areas are annexed to the city, we will be able to provide services to them. This is, like I said, it's just a tool. Each individual annexation comes before City Council and City Council makes their determination on whether to approve the annexation on an individual basis. But what this boundary does, it defines those areas where we would accept an application for annexation. Hope that answers a little bit of why we do this. I think the last time this has been brought before the committee was 2022 and previous to that, 2016. So this boundary is something that has moved around over the years based on our growth projections and desires and direction from City Council. At this point, I'm going to turn over the presentation to Alexandra Davis with Aurora Water. She and her colleagues will provide a little bit more detail into what this amendment is or based in, why now, and why the amendment areas are identified.
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, all commissioners. My name is Alexandra Davis. I'm an Assistant General Manager for Aurora Water. I run the Water Supply and Demand Division. With me tonight is also Marshall Brown, the General Manager of Aurora Water, and I am here to talk to you about water supply and demand. I'm going to share a PowerPoint with you, so please let me know if this does not work. I have never had the pleasure of coming before the Commission, so I wasn't sure of the extent or expertise of your understanding around Aurora's water supply. So if this is a little basic for you, I apologize, but hopefully it will be interesting. Oh, that did not go forward. Let's see. There it goes. Aurora's water supply was begun, our water department was begun in the 1950s when Denver Water decided to draw a blue line around its service area and not expand its service area anymore. At that time, Aurora was small and growing, and the City Council and citizens knew they wanted to get bigger. So they started the Aurora's Water System. As you may know, in Colorado, water is allocated through what's called the prior appropriation doctrine. The prior appropriation doctrine is a system of first in time, first in right. So the earlier date you have associated with your water rights, the more likely you are to get actual water supply. So for example, the water rights were started to be appropriated in the mid-1800s. And by 1950, most of the senior water in the system had already been what we call appropriated. So Aurora's ability to get water has relied on not only developing some water supply, some new water supply with water rights dated in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, but also acquiring senior water rights from agriculture. We have a very diverse and robust renewable water supply system. As you can see in this map, we have a water system and water rights in the Upper Colorado River. We have water rights in the Upper Arkansas River Basin. We have water rights in the Lower Arkansas River Basin, which we move upstream to the Otero Pump Station. The Otero Pump Station and Pipeline is a 56-mile pipeline that brings our Colorado River and Arkansas River water over to the Upper South Platte Basin, where water is then deposited in Spiny Reservoir, which also captures our Upper South Platte Basin water rights and moves those down to the city through Strancha, through the Rampart Pipeline. And we also have our North Campus, which is a series of wells and gravel pits and a big pipeline that moves water up to our Binnie Treatment Plant known as the Prairie Water System. So the Prairie Water System allows us to reuse a lot of our water rights that we get from the Upper South Platte and from the Arkansas and Colorado systems, as well as pick up our water rights in the Lower South Platte. It is a large, complicated, and very robust water system and diverse, which allows us some protections. One of the important things to understand is the idea of a system being over-appropriated. So a system is over-appropriated when there's more demand on the system, demand for water, then there is water to meet that demand. The Arkansas River is over-appropriated on most days, probably 360 out of 364 days. Sometimes always over-appropriated. The Colorado River System is technically not necessarily over-appropriated in the state, but if you've been paying attention to some of the headlines on Colorado River, you know there's a lot going on there that we'll talk a little bit about in the future. The South Platte System is, in an average water year, is over-appropriated. Oh, except for about four to seven weeks of the year. The rest of the time, there is more demand than there is water available to meet that demand. Because water is very variable, water availability is very variable in Colorado, as you probably know, if you've lived here for any extent of time, you know, we can have very big winters with lots of snow. We can have a winter like this one, which is shaping up to be awfully dry. So there's large variability in the state around water availability, and some years, our water rights yield twice as much as they do in other years. And so storage becomes very important to smoothing that out, to enable us to capture water in those drier years, to have it available in the wetter years. We have about 156,000 acre-feet of water storage available, space available, that one acre foot, if you think of a football field minus the end zones, filled with about a foot deep of water, that's about an acre foot of water, and it serves up to three to four homes on average annually. So storage is very important to us, and we have 12 different reservoirs that we use. Infrastructure is critical to capturing and then moving the water to Aurora. So think about the lower, having water down here in the Rocky Ford area, we have about 10,000, 12,000 acre-feet a year that we yield, and we have to move it first all the way up through reservoirs upstream, and then through a pipeline, and then through more reservoirs all the way down to the city. So infrastructure is expensive, and it's critical to being able to access the water that we need. Another thing that's very important in water supply and demand is data, and we are constantly looking at a lot of different data. This is, we look at these charts every month to see this is, you know, what's going on in Colorado vis-à-vis drought, is it dry? Warming in Colorado has a significant impact on water supply because as the earth, you know, the soil dries out, it requires more water. So streams will flow less. Precipitation, of course, is critical. Are we going to get average precipitation? More, less? We also look at temperature because temperature is, as I just said, warming is really critical to what's going on in terms of whether our water rights will yield water or not. So this is some of the data that we look at regularly as we're looking, as we're looking at what's been happening and as we're looking at what's coming. One of the important projects that the Water Department does every five years is the Integrated Water Master Plan. The Water Department provides drinking water. It also deals with stormwater and wastewater. And this Integrated Water Master Plan allows us to look ahead to understand all the infrastructure needs and the water supply needs. One, to maintain our existing system for our existing customers, for the 400,000 people who live in Aurora right now. That system of not only what I was showing you earlier, all the water infrastructure necessary to get the water to the city, but then once we get it to the city, the infrastructure necessary to clean the water and then to deliver it to everyone's homes. All that infrastructure has to be maintained at a high standard in order to ensure reliable drinking water every day for our citizens, as well as dealing with stormwater and wastewater. And we know there's growth. So we need to be able to plan and understand what projects we need in order to have the infrastructure as well as the water supply for that growth. So our 2024 Integrated Water Master Plan did a couple of things, which is, which are important to understand in the request before you tonight. First, it looked at our ongoing conservation. Aurora, the city of Aurora, has one of, and the Aurora Water Department has one of the most robust conservation programs in the West, in the Western United States. It is remarkable what our conservation team has done and the multitude of different ways in which we seek to reduce demand from commercial, industrial, residential areas to get people to use what they need. As you are probably well aware of, Aurora was the first city in the state to ban non-functional turf. Non-functional turf is usually Kentucky bluegrass. It is a crop that consumes an enormous amount of water, but provides very little benefit to the citizens. And so we have been working quite diligently to reduce the amount of non-functional turf in the city because it can have a huge impact on how much water we need for our existing customers, as well as how much water we're going to need in the future. This map is missing a little bit of pink. This area down to the, I think that would be your left corner, that is also, there should be a lot of red down here. The red areas are areas that are served by, the water supply is served by other entities. So we have Range View, a water district. We have this big map here is the Lowry Ranch, which is owned by the state land board, and they have a contract with Range View to serve that. This red area up here is Denver Water. So these are areas that we do not expect to serve, and in our planning, we did not include as providing any water supply to going forward. So the green, the gray is where development has already occurred, where there's already water use going on that we are serving. The green is land that is within the city's current boundary. And the yellow is the area within the planning area boundary. And we looked at, you know, continuing service in the gray, providing service in the green, and providing service in the yellow. For our projected water demand, we will need a significant, significantly more water than we need today. Right now, our water, our water needs are about 93,000, 94,000 acre-feet of water. That water is the amount of water we need in order to produce at the treatment plant the 55,000 to 56,000 acre-feet of water that our citizens consume right now. So included in that number of 93,000 acre-feet is the water delivered to the customers, which is about 55,000 to 56,000 acre-feet. The losses in our systems, which is very low by industry standards, 4-ish percent, and anything under 10%, I understand, is considered quite low. Our source of supply system demand, so we have other golf courses, et cetera. We have some extraterritorial commitments. You may have heard or know about the Wise Project, where Denver and Aurora agreed to help certain South Metro entities in South Metro, Castle Rock, Parker, other communities get off of non-renewable groundwater. We have contractual commitments to Roxborough and to Dominion that were entered into many, many years ago. And we have evaporation and stream losses. This is an important figure, this reservoir evaporation and stream losses. So in 2012, those losses were about 10% of our water supply. So thinking about moving that water from Rocky Ford, from the Upper Colorado River, through Turquoise, through Twin Lakes, over into Spiny, from Spiny down to Strancha, all of that water movement and sitting in reservoirs, you lose a lot of water. Because of climate change and warming, that system loss is almost doubled. And as I'll comment in a minute, we expect it to increase more. So with a system loss of about 20% and these other demands and losses, we need almost twice as much water to deliver the water that we actually consume. Looking ahead, we see this graph is very helpful. Here's where we are. Right now, we are doing fine. We can meet all of our customers' demands. And we have a little bit of buffer for the near future. So the black line is, of course, demand. The blue, the dark, the light solid blue is our existing system supplies. The speckled blue is our supplies from reuse. So you may be familiar with our Prairie Water System, which was the first reuse system in the state of Colorado. It's something that Aurora should be very, very proud of. They, we had a big drought if people were here in 2002, and by 2006, Prairie Waters was well underway. And it's a system that allows us to reuse all of our reusable water, 100%. So it's very significant to our water supply capability. And the orange, the speckled orange, is our growth into Prairie Water. So Prairie Waters is sized to be larger, and as we use more water, we'll have more water to reuse, and that's in the speckled orange. And then the dark orange are the projects that we, and the supply that we are going to need to acquire in order to meet future growth. So I'll talk about in a minute. One of the things you can see on this is that our existing supply is going to continue to be reduced due to climate warming. And right now, we're looking at approximately 13%, but those numbers are already changing in our estimation. We also have some leased water supplies that, according to several different contracts and IGAs, we have access to until the early 2040s, when those leases expire, and we may or may not be able to renew those at that time. So this orange, this dark orange is very important. And I'll get to that dark orange in a minute. One of the places where Aurora really sets the bar is in its innovation around water supply. We have continued, the agency, the department, the city has continued to do a lot of things to be as creative as possible in finding new supply. So Prairie Waters, I've talked about quite a bit already. The London Mine was an acquisition of a water supply up in Fairplay, up in the Fairplain-South Park area, water that people were very concerned about because it was coming out of a mine. We spent two years negotiating agreements that protected Aurora from any environmental liability while accessing a steady supply of water from the mountains. The turf ordinance, as I mentioned, was groundbreaking. It was the first of its kind, and the state followed up with its own turf ordinance for the entire state after seeing what Aurora did. Our partnership in the Rocky Ford area, we recently acquired a farm that I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute that's going to help us meet the water supply that we have left in the Arkansas Basin. Direct potable reuse is a big project that we are working on to allow us to fully reuse our water with without having to incur stream losses from metro wastewater down to the Brighton area. We have, just recently, the Council adopted our Large Water User Guide, which ensures that large commercial or industrial users coming to Aurora are required to meet these very strict standards. And if they cannot do what they, whatever business it is that they want to do within these standards, then they don't get to come to Aurora. They have to meet these allocation standards. And then we have very progressive fee structure and allocations to help our existing customers not only use just what they need, but also to ensure that the value of water is being appreciated. So the department and the city have been, as you are probably aware, very innovative in figuring out how to reduce demand and increase supply in some very creative areas. And these supply opportunities are drying up. Well, that was a bad pun, sorry. It's true. They are drying up. So as you know, our mountain supply is Upper South Platte, Arkansas, and Colorado River. The Arkansas Basin, we have several agreements. The city of Aurora has several agreements that were entered into almost two decades ago regarding that limit our ability to acquire more water out of the Arkansas. We are limited to 10,000 acre-feet that we can then access three years out of 10, under certain conditions, until 2048. And there's nothing to say that after 2048, this will become any easier. In fact, it will likely be a lot harder. So that partnership, that CNA partnership that I mentioned, the farm acquisition, provided about 7,500 acre-feet of that 10,000 acre-feet left in Arkansas for us to access. And we are working on and close to finalizing two more agreements that will get the remaining 2,500 acre-feet. So by the end of 2026, we will have accessed all of the 10,000 acre-feet that we have left to access out of the Arkansas River Basin. The Colorado River Basin, the Colorado River is, as you are well aware, a massive river that runs through seven states and into Mexico and is in deep crisis right now. It is significantly over-appropriated. There is a deep disagreement on what the allocation of that river is going to look like going forward and how that river is going to be managed. In the state of Colorado, there are other attempts to make sure that anyone who is a trans-mountain diverter, such as Aurora, who's taking water out of the Colorado River Basin, is restricted. In the future, the West Loop entities are very keen not to allow any more future diversions out of the Colorado River. We have one more project planned, and we have an agreement around that project, but it will be very difficult to implement that project. Even though we are, we are, continue to be committed to implementing that project, technically, it could be up to 10,000 acre-feet, but highly likely, it's going to be far less than that if we can get it done. The Upper South Platte area, there are no more opportunities there. The cities have bought all the agricultural rights, including Aurora. There's really no more water to be had out of the Upper South Platte. So the Arkansas, the Colorado, and the Upper South Platte are areas that really, we've tapped out all of our opportunities there. So the Lower South Platte is what's left, and the Lower South Platte water supplies are more expensive because they, you have to move them upstream. So you have pumping costs, you have more infrastructure costs. They have a much lower water quality, so there's a much higher treatment cost associated with Lower South Platte water. And there is incredible competition going on because Aurora is not the only city in this situation. There are numerous municipalities in the Front Range, in the South Platte Basin, that are also have been experiencing a lot of growth, that are looking for those water supplies to meet their future growth. So the South Platte is complicated. We have done a plan on the South Platte where we listed, where we went through every single opportunity that we could think of. We brainstormed with consultants and all of our experts, and we created five different scenarios around what we could possibly develop out of the Lower South Platte in terms of water supply. Portfolio E was the most complicated. Portfolio E was the most complex and inclusive of those five portfolios. It is aspirational. It will be very difficult to accomplish everything that's in portfolio E. Um, if we can, it would be amazing, but it is, it is definitely aspirational. So we seek to, you know, acquire another twenty thousand acre feet of water from the South Platte. Um, and that would require significant infrastructure to move that water up as well as the cost of acquiring that water to begin with. Um, water rights are very competitive, very expensive right now to acquire about twenty-seven to thirty-one thousand dollars per acre foot depending. And to acquire that water that we are looking for in portfolio E, which is that dark red orange band on the previous graph, we're looking at almost seven hundred million dollars. And the capital costs of the infrastructure would be one to two and a half billion dollars. So not only is there a lot of competition, the water quality is not great, it's aspirational, but it's also enormously expensive. Which of course is borne by developers and ratepayers. Um, this capital improvement plan is the product of our Integrated Water Master Plan, which helps us determine what capital, what projects do we need to maintain our current infrastructure and supply? And what projects will we need to develop that new supply for new um for growth, for the future? People, as you can see, the water resources side is a huge part of that capital improvement. It is um a clearly almost half. So again, extremely expensive going forward. Uh, water conservation is extraordinarily important going forward. It won't be enough to meet the future, but it could certainly help us meet the now. Or so as you saw in the um graph, there was that decrease from climate change. Well, this uh conservation, because conservation is a one-to-one ratio for every acre foot we save, we don't need the two acre feet that we had originally needed to bring it over because we have the water in our system. So conservation is going to continue to be extraordinarily important to maintaining our current system and our current supply and meeting our current needs. Uh, but it won't, it, it won't get us to the future. Um, conservation includes uh these, you know, sustainability, beautiful new plants, no turf, getting rid of the lawns. Uh, which leads us to our policy recommendations because what our Integrated Master Plan told us is there's a point at which we cannot meet the, the estimated future growth. So when we looked at in our Integrated Water Management Plan, Master Plan, when we looked at all of the demands that would be created under the current planning area boundary, if the current planning area boundary was built out, we would not have enough water. Even if we accomplished portfolio E, we would not be able to meet all of those demands. So we are very concerned about creating expectations um by having land in the planning area boundary where people will believe, those landowners would believe that they will have an opportunity to annex into the city and receive water service from the city of Aurora. And at some point, there won't be an ability to meet that demand. So we are asking the council, we are asking you to now reset those expectations by strategically trimming the planning area boundary to make our future more feasible in terms of water supply. You can see the other, the other policy recommendations that are going to the council. But the important one, or the Planning Commission, of course, is strategically trimming the planning area boundary. And you can see uh this is the area. This red area, this large red area is area that um is includes service from another provider. But the other map, this is all yellow. And this, so this is all area in the planning area boundary that has not yet been annexed uh that we feel would be most advantageous to cut out of the existing planning area boundary. Are there any questions? Would you like me to go back? Yes, Commissioner Geyser.
Commissioner Geyser, go ahead.
Yeah, I was a city council member of City Council of Broomfield. So I was very familiar with their plan and the struggle they went through with rocky flats and, and that problem. And I also sat on, as a county commissioner, on the state water uh planning. Um, what percentage of water in Aurora can be used to extinction? And what percentage of water is reused?
Hmm, great question. So we have uh about ninety-five percent of our water supply can be reused to extinction. We have a few water rights that are single-use water rights. Uh, but most of our water, all, all of our water from the Colorado River, all of our water from the Arkansas and a significant portion of the water that we have from agricultural rights that we've changed to municipal use is all reusable. So I approximately ninety-five percent. And that's why Prairie Waters is so important because the Prairie Waters Project is how we pick up all that water and reuse it. We bring it back into our system.
Well, that's a great um statistic, but what percentage of that you, are you actually reusing?
Hmm, um, right now Prairie Waters is, it runs at about uh seven to ten MGD, so a million gallons per day. Um, maybe Marshall knows exactly that percentage. Uh, it, it varies depending on the water year. So if it's a very wet water, if it's a very wet year, we, Prairie Waters is expensive to run. It's expensive to treat that water, to pump it up. So if we have very full reservoirs, if we have a lot of mountain train, as we call it, water that, that we're bringing over from the Colorado and the Arkansas, we will reuse less because at this point we have excess supplies. And I say that, you know, there's a, there's some buffer right now. We have, we're not using everything. In the future, we will be using everything all the time and we won't, we will be using Prairie Waters to um to the most degree possible. But right now, it really depends on the water year as to how much we're pulling up through Prairie Waters.
Yes, our, our daily demands, just to add a little bit of additional information. Our daily demands vary from about thirty to thirty-five million gallons a day up to about a hundred million gallons a day. In the winter, we're down around the thirty to thirty-five. So the Prairie Water System can meet a, a fairly high percentage of that demand. In the summer, it's not quite as high. We are working on expanding, the bottleneck in the system right now is up on the river where we're pulling the water out, out of riverbank filtration wells. And so we have additional wells being constructed right now that will increase the capacity. The other thing we do with some of that water when we don't need it for ourselves um is we do lease it to other entities. So we lease it in its raw form, sometimes to, back to farms or agricultural entities. And then we'll bring it into our system later when we have the demand and the, and the infrastructure. Um, and we lease some finished water also to uh through our Wise Partnership to Castle Rock and Parker and South Metro entities that are primarily on groundwater. So we're trying to take full advantage of that water supply. Um, but we currently don't need all of it in our system quite yet. And we don't have the infrastructure built entirely to get it all into our system.
And, and what effect does, I know with the uh other states that are downstream, uh what, you know, wanting to get more of our water, what effect will, does that all have on our water supply?
Hmm, great question. Are you considering, are you thinking Nebraska or the set, or the Colorado River Basin states or both?
We have both.
Yeah. So um the Nebraska, the South Platte Compact, which, which Colorado and Nebraska and Wyoming um signed to deal with to uh, uh share the South Platte River and the North Platte River uh has currently, has recently come into view because Nebraska has been feeling that, that Colorado is not meeting its compact obligations. Uh, I think the state is very clear, the state of Colorado is very clear that we are meeting our compact obligations. There's an interesting administrative piece. So right now, the South Platte Compact only impacts uh Division Two, I think it's Division Two, which is, is the lowest, so every basin is divided into divisions. And at the bottom of the, the, right before the South Platte crosses the border, there's the Division Two, I'm pretty sure it's Division Two. And the South Platte Compact obligation does not extend upstream of that division. So right now Aurora and the cities outside of that division have no obligation to provide water to meet the compact obligations. Uh, we believe that that is one of the potential threats that Nebraska is seeking is to change that aspect of the compact. They're also talking about the compact allows the development of a canal called the Perkins Canal. Um, and that canal was actually started about a hundred years ago and it was never finished because it was a bad idea then and it's still a bad idea. Because the soils are so sandy. So we're paying close attention and we're involved in conversations around uh with the state. Obviously, the state is the entity that deals with Nebraska and with the compact allegations. And um right now, there is a lawsuit that's been fired, filed by Nebraska. And uh the state of Colorado filed a response saying that that lawsuit was premature. So the Supreme Court is determining, the US Supreme Court is determining whether to accept Nebraska's uh complaint. Chances are they will. It'll be long, um, an arduous litigation in front of the Supreme Court. But we are paying attention to that and working with the state. So in direct answer to your question, it's very hard to say what the impacts would be. Right now, there are no impacts of the Nebraska's position, but should they prevail on changing, uh you know, on the idea that we're out of compliance, the state might have to take different actions. And it's hard to see what those would be right now.
Thank you. I'm very impressed with all of your work.
For some cleanup, Marshall, uh since this is a public hearing, could we have your name and department or title for the record, please?
Um, sure. Marshall Brown, General Manager of Aurora Water.
Uh, any further questions for the presenters before we move on to staff? Uh, Commissioner Riley and then Commissioner Hogan. And I'll remind you, please keep your questions narrowed to our actual agenda item, please, which is the adoption of the Comp Plan Amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so um the assessment here uh will certainly cause concern with residents, businesses and developers. Um, I did go to a town hall where he presented uh at uh Councilwoman Lawson's Town Hall. What, what, what is your intent on making this information more available to folks in Aurora?
I see Marshall's, yeah.
So we are getting out into town hall meetings. Obviously, this will, this is going through a public process now. The and part of our challenge in communicating is our water supply is in good shape for our existing customers. Part of the reason we're doing this or proposing this amendment is to ensure that we're always able to provide water to our existing customers, including future customers that we will grow into and keeping the costs apportioned to um the appropriate parties. So we're, we are, we do a lot of other education forums. We get out Forest of Facets, various different forums with the public. Um, but this focused conversation we are taking to ward uh member council meet, or the council member ward meetings, taking it through this public process. We also have the Citizen Water Advisory Commission, which is comprised of citizens from Aurora. We've taken the discussion there. We've taken the discussion to water policy. And it will go through the rest of the council process study session in regular as well. So um it's also um available online. So it's available in a few places um that we're trying to get out into. And if anybody has any suggestions of other means or forums that we could take advantage of, we're open to that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hogan.
Um, my question is actually for Daniel. Hello, Daniel. Um, and it's just this, while water obviously is a key factor in setting growth boundaries, is there anything else that you guys consider in creating these growth boundaries? Or does water dictate the comp plan?
Obviously, providing uh public services, public infrastructure, including water, but not limited to water, um streets, roads, uh public safety, um uh facilities are all part of what um the public, sort of the package of public um services uh required for this area. Um, obviously, if um a commercial residential development doesn't have a adequate and safe uh water supply, um, it's not really the most appealing uh neighborhood. Um, so it, you know, it does play a large part in this. Um, I would say um in development of the map and in identification of those areas that will be reduced in, in, in this proposal, um, we did take into account not only just the, the, the water capacity and, and the ability to serve those areas, but we have tried to be strategic around um retaining those areas that uh we saw near-term uh growth potential, um growth of employment, um uh or economic development opportunities and retained those within the boundary so that we could take advantage of those um as Aurora continues to grow. And really um identified those areas um that were maybe sort of a lower priority or a lower um impact as those areas to be removed from the boundary. So I, I would say it was, it's not just a water, um, an exercise in sort of water planning. Um, we did take into considerations um how and where um the boundary was adjusted using um a, a number of different criteria. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so I take it by either your staff report or your presentation tonight that you concur based upon water usage and other mitigating factors that it is in the best long-term future of our city to reduce these boundaries at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's staff's recommendation to approve this um uh proposal. Uh, we work, uh Planning Department works closely with Aurora Water um all the time on uh planning uh for their um infrastructure. Um, it's a, you know, a key element in, in land use planning and development uh planning. Um, so we're, we're, we've been coordinating throughout this process and we coordinate over here um uh in terms of sort of land use and infrastructure uh coordination.
One more question, Chair Wells.
I, I think um let's go ahead and let Daniel wrap up with the staff presentation and then we'll actually get to questions. We got a little bit out of order and kind of confused with the way that this hearing goes. So uh Daniel, the floor is yours.
Sure, just, just a couple of points before we turn this back over for more questions or enter into that public hearing. Um, the criteria for a, approval um for a comprehensive plan amendments listed in your staff reports. Um, it is uh defined by the U D O. Um, and it's the staff report and it's um staff's recommendation, um right, and our finding that um the proposal meets this criteria. Um, two notes on procedure that are kind of unique to this type of request. Um, the first is that the Planning and Zoning Commission holds a public hearing on the item. And that any recommendation that comes from the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to be approved by a two-third vote um of the entire membership, not a simple majority. Um, that's unique to um comprehensive plan amendments. Um, and I'm happy to um answer any further questions. I know our Aurora um staff um can answer any further questions on their part.
Okay, questions for the commission from staff? For staff. Okay, uh go ahead, Commissioner Hogan. Okay, uh go ahead, Commissioner Hogan. You're muted, Commissioner.
One question, please, for Daniel and Marshall. How often do you review this? And how often will you make adjustments? If Marshall was gifted with a whole lot more water, how, how often do you review the plans?
I guess I'll leave the, the, the water planning portion to Marshall. I will just sort of briefly say as far as amending the planning annexation boundary, that's, that can be done as needed. That's something um that uh we amend um you know periodically, um every so ye, so many years as opportunities or or needs um dictates. Um, that's really an action by City Council. Um, and they can take that on whenever they'd like to. Um, as far as sort of the water planning, um I'll leave that to to Marshall and Alexandra.
Yeah, so our, our planet, it's a great question, actually. So thank you, Commissioner Hogan. The process we go through is about a five-year planning cycle where we dive in in depth for our Integrated Water Master Plan, look at our supplies. And in the process, we coordinate, as Daniel mentioned, with planning very closely to look at zoning and and density assumptions, et cetera, um associated with those future growth areas. So that's on a five-year cycle. I will note that as we went through the process this year to to compile these recommendations that are before the commission this evening, we did note a couple of interesting things that we are in discussions on right now. So um one of those is that the density assumptions that we've used historically um both in planning and in water are evolving right now. So uh we're seeing additional height and density interests coming in. And the assumptions we've used in the planning process are a little more historically based. So we're in discussions right now about do we need to make adjustments to our planning process that could ripple into additional recommendations, or it may not uh as we get through that process. The other thing we noted that's kind of interesting in our existing planning area boundary is we have a lot of areas that are built out into other jurisdictions that are in our planning area boundary. They also have other water service providers for those areas. So we're in discussion about a few of those areas as well, and it may result in some recommendations for further adjustment associated with those. So if you think about, for example, the Copper Leaf Neighborhood, um currently not in Aurora. It's partially built out. It's further developing now. It's on somebody else's water supply. So we're having conversations about some of those areas and do they make sense to leave in our planning area boundary or maybe not. So we could see recommendations coming sooner than that five-year cycle is, I guess, my point there.
Great, thank you. Further questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, uh Stephanie, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on Agenda Item Eight A?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, at this time, I will close this portion of the public hearing on Eight A and entertain a motion. Okay, on Agenda Item Eight A, the Chair rises for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Based on the staff recommendation, the presentation and discussion at this evening's public hearing, I move to recommend approval to the Aurora City Council, the amendment to the Aurora Places Comprehensive Plan to Reduce Planning and Annexation Boundary because the proposal complies with the Criterion Code, Section one forty-six dash five dot four dot one eighty-three and the provisions of the code, Section one forty-six dash five dot three of the U D O for the reasons stated in the staff report. The Chair has risen to recommend the approval of Agenda Item Eight A as their second. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Eight A. I'll open the floor for discussion on the motion.
This is Commissioner Jacek. I think this is very wise and looking forward uh with the small lots, is that possibly going to increase the density and increase the water usage? So I think we're right on on top of this early, which is a good thing for Aurora.
I agree with Commissioner Jacek. I think it's incredibly prudent of staff to bring this forward and um balancing sort of the future economic value in growing the city versus the health welfare of the citizens as Code Section one forty-six requires and what we have today and keeping pricing at an understandable level and also keeping a healthy watershed. So I appreciate staff for bringing this forward. Uh Commissioner Geiser.
Yes, I'm very impressed with the Aurora Water Department. They've done a great job in looking at the water supply into the future. And I think this is very smart in order to contain some of the areas that we can't provide water for.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion on the approval of Agenda Item Eight A? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Commissioner Jacek?
Approve.
Commissioner Bush?
Approve.
Commissioner Geiser?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
I approve.
Commissioner Banker?
Approve.
Commissioner Hogan?
Approve.
And Commissioner Walls also votes to approve. Uh with the unanimous vote, we have met the two-thirds threshold. Agenda Item Eight A is approved. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you all.
Uh Stephanie, do we have any members of the public sign up to speak on non-agenda items?
No, Chair, we do not.
Okay, I will move into our comments by Commissioners, any miscellaneous items of business. First and foremost, I would like to recognize Commissioner Geiser. Um, this will be his last uh meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And my hat is off to you, Bob. It's been an absolute pleasure serving with you. Um, this commission and the City of Aurora have benefited immeasurably by your addition to the commission with your experience as, as a council member, with your experience in development. Um, the council that you have added to our commission, uh it can't be measured. It will continue to be measured years from now, years into the future. So my hat is off to you. Uh I hope that we can continue to live up to your example as a commission. And thank you for, for teaching me personally um just by the comments that you make and the questions that you ask and your view and scope of development. So thank you so much for serving with us, Bob.
I want to thank you all for serving with me. It's been a great privilege to serve with you. And I think that the Planning and Zoning Commission is in good hands. I look forward to many years uh of you continuing uh your service. And thank you very much for everything that you've done. And I appreciate especially staff for all the work that you've done and you continue to do. My hat's off to you for the great job that you do every day.
Further comments or announcements by Commissioners? Uh Commissioner Riley?
Yeah, I just noticed uh upcoming in our next meeting, there's a lot of Ward Two uh matters that we're going to discuss. I'm just, again, trying to be educated, still new. What prompts so many issues from Ward Two to come up for us to look at next period?
I'll defer to Brandon.
Uh Chair, through you, uh you know, I think Ward Two is generally northeast Aurora, and so it's just simply, you know, when all the new subdivisions uh that are encompassed by that council ward um are are just the most active in development right now. Um, ranging from all the Painted Prairie, the Windler, the Aurora Highlands, Green Valley Ranch, all those, as well as the industrial projects out there as well.
Okay. And this is just a function of the applications that are moving through the process that happen to be ready for upcoming commission meetings, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Further miscellaneous comments of items of business or announcements by the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our Planning Division Manager Report. Brandon, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Three, three items we've approved administratively over the last couple of weeks. Uh I'll address briefly. Uh Pine Wood, um multifamily um located roughly behind uh the shop Ford there. So kind of the northeast corner of Havana and Alameda, kind of a block in, uh forty-nine units there, kind of a uh infill of an existing complex that's already there. Um, Cottonwood Creek, uh at the other end of the spectrum, way out in Jewel, at Jewel and Haysmount, um two hundred and fifty-nine unit sort of uh filing, uh so lots, lotting of two hundred and fifty-nine uh single-family type products. And Painted Prairie, um northwest corner of Fifty-S sixth and Piccadilly, kind of on, right next to that multifamily complex that is there is uh another townhome development, uh two hundred and four units there. So those are the three uh approved there. Um, I don't have any, any further updates for you all. Uh, look forward to uh seeing you all next week um for, for the holiday gathering. Uh otherwise, if there's any questions, I would happy, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Brandon? Go ahead, Becky.
Brendan, I think last month you were going to um contact the City Clerk's Office, let us know who on Planning Commission um is going to run. We know that we have one space to fill, but there should be at least two people that are up. Correct?
Uh, yeah, my apologies. I don't have that information handy. Um, Stephanie happens to, so I'll have to circle up on that. Basically, you want to know what positions are up for renewal essentially uh in addition to to Bob's, correct?
It would be true. Um, I know the answer. If I can, yeah, me too. Um, and um uh Commissioner Bush is up for renewal and he's also reapplied. So, and we've let our, our team know as well. Um, so just, just to.
Stephanie.
Thank you.
And when do you anticipate? Because we do have a new council and the system is not as um well, it will be a new system possibly. It will counsel, will Commissioner Bush be asked to apply or simply asked to be reappointed?
I don't have much more information probably than than you do in in that regard. I think we're still waiting to see where where the dust settles um in in that regard uh of exactly procedurally how they they want to handle um interviews of people who have applied and things of that sort and people who are asking for renewal.
And I would note too, if it's okay, that um we did receive the application from um Commissioner Bush and the Clerk's Office does have it. So, already.
And then can you also confirm the length of our terms and when we are termed out? I believe there's three years with three terms.
Three-year terms, three can, three terms is is the general rule, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banker?
Well, I had two questions and thank you, Becky. Your last question um was one of them. This is, this, I probably should have asked while water was here and I didn't, but um maybe somebody, you know, staff would be able to tell me. So when you have a two hundred and fifty-unit apartment building, does that require more water than the same amount of space if it were single-family housing?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't want to misquote anything or make any presumptions, so I would have to follow up with you on on those questions.
Okay, I just, a random thought that came to mind.
Okay, further questions for Brandon? All right, thank you, Brandon. Uh we will move on to our City Attorney Report. Lena, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, so the only thing I have this evening is to just let you all know that I am working on those changes to your bylaws. Um, so um if it is Becky, that is our um Vice Chair again, or whoever the Vice Chair is, um hopefully get on the January study session so we can go over those um changes and then bring that forward in a January um or February meeting for you all to vote on.
Perfect, thank you. And and I think since elections won't have happened by the January meeting, I think Commissioner Hogan, it's still under your purview to plan study session for January. So, um, questions for Lena? Commissioner Hogan?
Lena, when is, when will we get any legislative updates?
So the legislative um session is, I believe, started and we are starting to see things already. Um, so as I have bills um that are uh related to land use, I will present those um at my appointed time in the meeting. So right now, there's nothing that's come up. Um, but as things come through, I will be sure to let you guys know.
Thank you.
Uh, further questions for Lena?
Oh, I'm sorry. I I did miss, I'm so sorry, Chair. I did misspeak. There was one piece of legislation I did forget about. Um, something similar to the uh Yigby Bill, if you remember that from last year, the uh the Yes in God's Backyard Bill. This is similar to that um with schools being able to build on, um, I believe it's parcels of land that they own that are less, that are five acres or less. Um, I do not believe at this point that the bill has been presented. Um, it is still in draft format, but we were able to receive a um an, a view of, were able to look at it prior to it being um presented um on the floor. Um, so that bill, that concept is coming back around again this session. So we'll see where that goes, if it is any more successful than the Yigby Bill was last year. Um, but that is one that I have seen. Sorry, I completely forgot about that.
No worries. Any questions about that from the commission? Okay, thank you, Lena. Um, a final opportunity for announcements? Seeing none, I move that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Riley. Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.
All right, bye.